I call the 2,428th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 in city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card on the table back there for those at City Hall or emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama a el secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuyia, et cetera treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. Okay, and our announcements. Milwaukee is updating its transportation system plan, a 20-year guide for improving and adapting how we all get around. After a year of research and planning, a list of priority projects has been identified. We talked about it a little at our work session. But now is the time for the community to review the list of priorities and adjust or add to them to improve safety for pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles. To do so, everyone is invited to attend a community workshop tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Letting Library. All attendees will be entered into a drawing for two $50 gift cards to local businesses. Snacks and beverages will be available while supplies last. The second and last pickup day for the city's annual bulky waste collection event is coming up this Saturday, June 21st, for Milwaukee residents. And this time it's the people north and east of 224. Please check the city website to find out if your home address is serviced on that day before putting out your bulky waste. Join a community-led festive gathering to celebrate LGBTQIA+ Pride Month this Saturday, June 21st, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Scott Park. The event will include community groups, crafts, fun activities, and live entertainment. Author Linda Ziedrich will discuss her book First Fruits: The Llewelling's and the Birth of the Pacific Coast Fruit Industry on Saturday, June 28th, at 12:00 noon at the Letting Library. The book offers a fascinating look at the lives of the Pacific Coast horticulturalists Henderson, Jonathan, and Seth Llewelling. The event is free with seating available on a first-come, first-served basis. The first annual Milwaukee Fest is coming up July 11th through the 13th, and you don't want to miss it. Friday night will feature live music, food, crafts, and a screening of Minions 4 at Ardenwald Park. Saturday is the most action-packed of the three days with kids' activities, live professional wrestling, community booths, jazzercise, and much more downtown, followed by the duck race over Kellogg Dam at the end of the day on Saturday. And to wrap it up on Sunday, stop by the farmer's market for lots of activities for kids, including face painting and crafts. I would also shout out that the Milwaukee Parks Foundation is hosting a concert and dance party benefit concert to raise money for local parks this Friday at Chapel Theater. It's featuring a really awesome band, my favorite band, called The June Bugs. And you can find information and tickets by visiting the Milwaukee Parks Foundation website, which is www.milwaukieparksfoundation.org. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at milwaukieorgan.gov or call 503-786-7555. And we have a haiku from Eliza Perry. "Milwaukee Streets: Sunny, Happy, and Glowy As We Smile and Laugh." So a nice haiku for kicking off summer and kicking off the end of the school year. I'm always taking haiku. The recorder has helped generate some haiku, but I'm always in the market for haiku. So anyone out there who wants to send me some haiku, please do. All right, we have no proclamations tonight, okay? So, community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community comments on city business that is not on the agenda. Before we begin, is there follow-up from the June 3rd comments with Sager?
Mayor, no one addressed council on June 3rd. We received one written comment before this meeting from Elvis Clark about middle housing. And my only update on middle housing is, as you all know, July 28th, we'll be hosting our community town hall in this room starting at 5:30.
Okay. Do you have anybody online who's raising their hand?
We have no non-staff Zoom attendees.
Participants, okay. And we have nobody with yellow cards, so I am going to forego the rest of the script on that and move us on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council May 6, 2025 work session and May 6, 2025 regular session. A resolution appointing the following people to boards and committees. Mona Thompson to the Public Safety... That's backwards. Rachel Burlington to the Public Safety Advisory Committee and Mona Thompson to the Tree Board. Can you please check our resolution and make sure that's right? A resolution acting as the local contract review board approving the award of a contract for construction of the 2025 grind-and-pave project to Knife River Corporation Northwest. A resolution authorizing an engineering services contract with Burgess and Nipple, Inc. for the Central Monroe Greenway Design, 21st Avenue to Oak Street project. CIP 2023-T38. And approval of an Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission application for Astell Imports at 10100 Southeast Main Street, a new licensee.
Mayor Beatty, I can confirm that the resolution is correct. The committees were just transposed.
Okay, great. Does any council member wish to remove a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as corrected.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as corrected. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. Consent agenda passes unanimously. And now we are going to have an order change in our agenda, so we're going to proceed to Item 8A, the adoption of the consolidated fee schedule. And then after that hearing, we will return to Item 7A. So this is a public hearing with a actual script. The public hearing on the proposed updated consolidated fee schedule is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the staff report, take public comments, deliberate, and consider approving the proposed fee schedule. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I will turn it over to Finance Director Michael Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I am here to present and answer any questions you have on the fiscal year 2026 fee schedule. This will go into effect July 1 of 2026. The new updated... The new update to the fee schedule is I am proposing a 3% convenience fee on payment cards. Staff is currently working on the implementation pattern for this. We hope to have something in fall for the implementation, but we wanted to put it on the fee schedule now ahead of that, just to make everybody aware. Also, two other changes I wanted to update everybody on. As the mayor sent in an email previously this morning, I am updating the language on the stormwater STCs as well. The blurb that Mayor Beatty suggested, I thought, made more sense than what was on the fee schedule now. And the second piece is the utility comparisons graph. We were gonna... I'm having Amy, our utility biller, update that graph to bring it up to date and also go out and look at other cities and see where we compare in the region for utility bill rates. I will say that after this fee schedule goes into effect, the single-family residential average we show as being about $140 per single-family home, which is consistent with what it's been in the past. We also are represented here behind me by the Solid Waste Haulers, who we met on May 20th and had the work session on solid waste rates. Those are included in the fee schedule. Finally, we had been talking with the Budget Committee and you about the public safety fee, and we are working on fine-tuning that and bringing it back to you later this summer. So with that, is there any questions or anything I can answer?
Well, so, no one else but staff saw my comments. I did not send those to all of council.
I was gonna ask, I might forward it to you, Scott, and if you could bring up this language that Mayor Beatty is proposing, because I think our proposal is we'd put this language in the fee schedule. So let me just email it to you right now. Okay, Scott.
While, I mean, while he's doing that, I just wanted to clarify the other thing that was prompted by my comment, which was on WS92, I believe. I mean RS92, sorry, RS92, which is the charts that compare our fees to...
Other cities.
Other cities. So there are three of them. And I guess I don't understand the difference between what the first one is... I mean, the second and third are two different fiscal years, right? They're the current fiscal year and the coming fiscal year.
I think I can explain this one. I think Mayor Beatty, when we update this, that top graph is FY 2223. It's really actually... That'll get eliminated, so there will only be two charts showing here.
There will only be the two, okay.
We left that one in because the last time we updated the fee schedule, we were still in the middle, I think of... Anyway, we... We'll take that out. There will be two charts that show 25 and 26.
Okay, okay, great. All right. Okay, yeah. So this is language for page... Do you remember, Michael?
I believe it was 87.
RS87. So I found the... At the very... Yeah, RS87 at the top, talking about stormwater STCs. I just found it... I found it less clear whether we were always billing every residential property based on the 2706 or we were measuring them somehow in relation to 2706. So it's the former, and so I propose this language that you see on the screen here. It's at the top of RS87, right under Stormwater System Development Charges. It's that first paragraph before the... Between the title and the charts. I felt like it wasn't... It was ambiguous. It wasn't wrong, it was just ambiguous, and I felt like this got rid of some of the ambiguity.
As it was explained to me, it was written by engineers.
Hey, don't throw them under the bus.
It might make sense to them, but I think the layman's voice...
Yeah, I totally agree with you, Mayor Beatty. And I'll just offer, I really appreciated the feedback you all gave us about the STC chapter in general when we met last time, and Mike and I took a close look at it and made improvements. There's still room to go. I have asked Peter and our engineers to be... To put an STC conversation on the forecaster, too. I just... I think we all could use a little more education, and I bet in doing that, we'll think of even other ways to improve the clarity of this section.
Okay, yeah. Other... I mean, I assume everybody's okay with that language change?
I think that looks good to me.
Okay. Other questions for Michael? We haven't received any correspondence on this topic.
No.
Okay. If no questions, does anyone wish to comment on the proposed fee schedule? Again, nobody online, so I don't need to read the rest of that script. Okay. So staff doesn't need to respond to testimony? And final call for questions of staff? Okay, if there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment part of the hearing.
I move to close the public comment part of the proposed updated consolidated fee schedule.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public comment part of the proposed updated consolidated fee schedule. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. The public comment part of the hearing is closed.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes?
Just for the record, I want to report that Councilor Stavendor is voting in the Zoom chat, and I'm recording that.
Oh, okay.
She's voted aye.
And you'll let us know if she votes contrary to everyone else?
That I'll do.
Okay, great. Is there any council discussion? All right. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution revising fees and charges and updating the consolidated fee schedule for fiscal year 2026.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution revising fees and charges and updating the consolidated fee schedule for fiscal year 2026. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. The fee schedule passes unanimously. Okay. All right. And our second...
Record time, Michael.
That is record time, yeah. Like, I told these guys they could go have a beer. Okay, we have another hearing on ordinance. I guess it's listed as a business item, not a hearing. So it's presented by our city recorder, Scott Stoffer.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty and council. Good to be here with you as always this evening. I have another quick action for council to consider. As the staff report laid out, back on March 4th, council adopted a new set of bylaws for what was the Citizens Utility Advisory Board. Those new bylaws included a new name, the Community Utility Advisory Committee, the CUAC. And so to make that change fully documented, the municipal code needs to be updated with that new name. So there are a handful of code changes where two words are changing. Citizens becomes community and board becomes committee. And I screenshotted for a visual presentation here, but it was also in the packet. It's a pretty straightforward change. I did several keyword searches and vetted it with staff, and I believe I caught them all. So hopefully this removes CUAC and adds CUAC. So pretty straightforward. I'd happy to entertain any questions.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Stoffer?
I move for a first and second reading by title only and adoption of the ordinance amending the municipal code to adopt Community Utility Advisory Committee as the name of the Citizens Utility Advisory Board.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance amending the municipal code to adopt Community Utility Advisory Committee as the name of the Citizens Utility Advisory Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. It passes unanimously. Ms. Sager, would you please read the ordinance two times by title only?
Certainly. An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending the municipal code to adopt Community Utility Advisory Committee as the new name of the Citizens Utility Advisory Board. And again, an ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending the municipal code to adopt Community Utility Advisory Committee as the new name of the Citizens Utility Advisory Board.
Mr. Stoffer, would you please poll the council?
Councilor Massey? Aye. Council President Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Stavendor?
Aye.
Councilor Coster Vady?
Aye.
Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero, ordinance 2252. And thank you very much.
All right. That was... Man, we are whizzing through. Look at this. We're 30 minutes, 35 minutes ahead of the schedule. Okay, so council reports, which will maybe not be quite so short. Do you have a legislative update for us?
Very briefly, and for what I believe is the last time, last one of 25. So marching towards signed die, I think Council President referred to it as a week and a half out, which so we're almost there. These are the bills, as of this morning, that I checked, that we were still tracking, that had been signed into law in the last... Since the last update. Don't know if anybody wants to say anything about these, but...
Council President, you got any insights for us? I hear that people think the Power Act is gonna pass. Oh, the Power Act did pass.
Yeah.
It's the Fair Act.
Yep, and we sent out a letter earlier about the Power Act and the Fair Act, both. But I am cautiously optimistic about the Fair Act.
So these are the ones that passed? These are the ones...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I was...
And these are the ones that, as my read goes, both chambers are in various versions of signing and concurring, and they're moving through third, second readings. So I don't know if anybody has anything to say about these, but these look like they're moving to a final signature.
You want to walk us through those, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I can hop through. The condo liability had a few dissensions, but that one passed. I know we've talked a lot about that, so that's heading to the governor. I think other relevant ones, SB 916 had a lot of amendments. I'd say this is one of the most controversial bills of this session. Right now, it would provide unemployment benefits to striking employees, but it caps the amount of benefits that you can get, and I think 32 weeks, and you have to wait 10 weeks before you can get your benefits. I might be looking at the numbers a little bit.
That's changed, then, okay.
There have been some tweaks to that one. Yep, so that bill is now headed to the governor. Those are, I'd say, the two most dramatic tails up there.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, of course, we'll talk about... So that's your... That's all you've got for us, that we'll talk about transportation?
Yep. So these are the ones that look like they're almost to the finish line. And then these are the ones that were still, perhaps, had some action. The light blue ones have had something recently, but I didn't see anything forward-scheduled. The yellow one at the bottom there is the big one and has a... Had a hearing... Or info meeting is what it said. I know it was an info meeting today.
What I might say, so Senate Bill 238, which would allow expanded use of drones, is one that we have had a lot of conversations about, and there's been a lot of controversy in the expanded scope that this bill would provide to police and a lot of concerns about how that relates to recent ways in which the federal administration has been deputizing police forces. So there are some prevailing winds making it less, I would say... There is not as clear a path for that bill. So if that bill matters a lot to our police department, I would say it would be helpful for Rep. Gamba to hear about that.
Yeah, I worked with the police department and did submit a letter in support of that one a couple of weeks ago, so I can pull that. I mean, I guess I don't know what's happened in those two weeks since and how it might have been amended or...
I don't think the bill has been amended significantly. I would... I know it was amended significantly after it was sent over from the Senate, but I think you would have been commenting on the revisions. I think if this is one that matters to the city, it would be good to have a touch point in Rep. Gamba.
Is this bill specific to law enforcement use of drones, right? Or is that...
I think it is. I don't know the specifics of the bill. I know the vague kind of sort of regulations with it.
That's my understanding. So, yeah, these things are moving. My public records channels, I did hear an update on 1077, but it was not at all clear to me that it was going to get to the finish line this session either, but perhaps. And then transportation was the big one in council. I should have put in asterisks because I know council... Four members of council sent a letter on HB 2025 this week. That's it for legislation.
Oh, can you please... Somebody please send us the letter that we sent, because some of us didn't see it. So that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we all agreed to it, but we didn't all see the language that ultimately went.
It went out in the name of four council members. From what I was understood, that Councilor Stavendor hadn't weighed in by the time they needed to send it, so...
Okay.
I can send you that letter.
Okay.
So if there's another legislation, we did have a couple of other points, but maybe give council a moment to talk about. Any other bills?
Well, I mean, transportation, what is the latest prognosis?
This is one that has elicited a lot of heartburn. I think if anything, this could derail the last bits of session. They're finalizing some numbers about what this package would mean for cities and counties, but I think that we stand to really benefit from the packages written. So I would say Rep. Gamba understands this is a good package to pass. I don't think that we can push anymore there. It's all kind of in limbo. I think a lot of people are just waiting for it to get on the floor to see how the vote checks out. And if this is the type of bill that, if it fails the first time, that we'll bring it back the next day. So we can always have a frantic response to a legislator who votes no.
So it's... Okay. So it's... Okay. I'd heard that Senator Starr, who's one of the Republicans who has been trying to work on the bill and get it passed, that his staffer was leading the charge against the bill or something?
There have been, I would say, there was an inflection point, and the bill that was drafted includes some programs like Great Streets or Safe Routes to School or Wildlife Crossings that Republicans would not have wanted in a final package, but I think were important to other members of the process. I think there's still a chance that Republicans come along on the package. But frankly, a lot of this is kind of...
Who knows?
Up in the air. I think it really will come down to whether the spirit moves you as you sit on the floor and click that yes or no button.
So you don't... I mean, there's really nothing more for us to do. We did our letter. We're on the record.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Okay?
All right. So we've noted the letter has been sent. We had a couple of questions. The city manager, I think, has a couple of questions for council.
Yes. The first, I've emailed this around this morning. We were approached by North Clackamas School District about appointing a or offering a name of a city representative to serve on the superintendent's bond advisory committee. They were happy with either staff or elected. Staff would be happy to do it, but we we think there probably is going to be some interest among the elected body and would be happy to defer. The details were in the email. It's kind of going to kick off, I think, in September, wrap up in December. Eight evening meetings is what it was looking like. But I wanted to see if you had a chance to consider that, if anyone wanted to put their name forward as an interested person.
I will be bored with no session to fill my time. I would be happy to do it, but I also defer to you if you would like to join.
No, I I am happy to have another member do it. I guess I thought maybe one of the people with children in the school system or or children soon to be in the.
I was gonna defer to Councilor Stavendor to hear what she wanted to do first before I threw my name in the ring, but I also don't want to, yeah, go ahead.
Could you reiterate the time commitment? I think you said eight meetings?
Absolutely. So it's mid-September through December of twenty twenty five, approximately eight evening meetings. The purpose would be comprehensive review of facility needs and the bond proposal development. That's, that's what I got from Cindy this morning.
Okay. I think, I mean, personally, I'm, I'm interested in being part of those conversations. I think that, I think that would be an exciting contribution and and I'm happy to help out that way.
I'm good with her doing it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to defer. I don't have kids yet, but in five years, when they're looking for a new superintendent, I fully intend to, so I'll put my marker down.
Okay, great. Well, I will write back to Cindy and share Councilor Stavendor's name, and I'll copy you into that, counselor. And then the second question, thanks, the second question I had, so we are not having a meeting on July first, which would be kind of our next first Tuesday, because that is the week of Fourth of July, a lot of people will go on vacation. So instead, we are having a special session. We turned our normal study session week, the second Tuesday, July eighth, into a special session. Right now, that agenda includes the next work session on our goal. It'll be our next economic development ninety minute session. It includes, I think, a brief preview of the website, the updated city website.
It had a potentially a annexation and potentially some other hearing. There were two things that were public hearings, which was.
Pulling it up.
Anyway.
Yep. Oh, an update about Kellogg Dam from April McEwen, annexation, oh, natural resources code update. This is that very final thing that Brett had been talking to us about. Right now, we we have it on the forecaster starting at five fifteen, but if it was a normal work session, regular session, we would start it at four. And staff are happy to do that so that we would do kind of the goal discussion from four to five thirty, then probably do the website preview, take a break for dinner, come back and do the consent agenda and the rest of the items. We do have an executive session penciled in for that evening, too. So wanted to check with you if you'd like us to move that forward to start at four or stick with a five fifteen start time.
You're good with moving it forward? I think that's probably ideal.
Yeah.
The council president won't be driving from Salem anymore.
Started at eight AM. I'm all yours.
Any concerns from you, Councilor Stavendor?
No, I'll get it in the calendar and hopefully everyone will be healthy by then.
Good. Yes, I hope so. Okay, great. We will move it to a four PM start time.
Okay.
That's it for me.
All right, great.
That's all I had for legislative update, too.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I don't think I'm not writing any more letters at this point. I'm lettered out. But other council reports, anybody has?
I don't have a council report, but I just wanted to, I have something I'd like to bring up. And I just mentioned to Council Massey in the break room a little bit, but there was an article I read both in the Daily Beast and the Guardian, and it wasn't, the report wasn't denied by a VA spokesperson. But in Trump and President, I don't want to call him that, Trump's executive order from January on his gender ideology, executive order, there were some things in there that regarded that that pertain to veterans and receiving care. And based on that, that executive order, the VA is now allowed to discriminate basically whether a vet gets care or not based on political party affiliation, based on marital status, based on nation of origin, and based on gender ideology. So I just read the article, yes. A VA spokesperson did not deny that that was in place. I contacted the Oregon Department of Justice because I was trying to find out if the Attorney General was already on this and if, you know, Oregon was going to file suit because that is a violation, an egregious violation against the people who fought for their very rights that so many of us disrespect and take advantage of, including the president. But yeah, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I'm trying to find ways that, you know, if there's anything that that we can do outside the DOJ or what's the best action that we could take because that, you know, along with all of the other executive orders, it directly impacts the people that we serve and, you know, this is, it's getting out of hand, getting way out of control. Now, it's to the point where we're going to deny medical care to people because of their beliefs and that's just completely antithetical to the United States, to our Constitution, to what all of us veterans, all of us veterans, black, white, brown, LGBTQIA, it doesn't matter, all veterans fought for. So I just, I just didn't know if maybe there was something that we could be doing, if there's a letter we can send, if there's anything that we could do on our end, or if maybe the council president has a secret doorway into the Attorney General's office and that anything we can do to shed some more light on this issue. Because a lot of times veterans issues like this, they, they, they don't make a lot of news as other issues do. So I just, I don't want this to go away and go by the wayside. I want to make sure that we take advantage of any and all that we can do because it directly impacts mental health. I mean, it's healthcare, period, so. And our veteran healthcare is under attack right now.
Would you mind sending that article to council?
Yeah, that would be great. And I, I mean, I think our, our AG has been pretty proactive on with other, you know, working with other AGs on litigation on a lot of the executive orders, so hopefully this is one of them, but it would be good to try and find that out. I mean, relatedly, I will say at yesterday's SHS meeting, there was a lot of talk by people that the DEI litmus test, I mean, you've maybe seen the articles about Wilsonville and different cities saying they won't sign on to these sort of agreements that the federal government wants to condition money on that, you know, requires them to give up their DEI policies and stuff. And I do think, you know, there's, there's a lot of pessimism in the room that, you know, we're not, you know, we're not going to get any federal money unless we're willing to do that stuff. So, yeah, yeah, I'm hoping some of this litigation gets us somewhere as a culture, as a country, but, yeah, it's really, really a sad state of affairs. More on, I'm trying to think if I have anything more to report on SHS. This was the last meeting of this SHS group. It will, so what will come of it is they are going to create a J-Pact-like structure for housing, for the SH, for administering the SHS money. And they've had these couple of groups that have were formed when the bond passed, but they didn't have the kind of structure and they didn't have elected officials at the table the way the other metro committees, J-Pact and M-Pact do. So they are planning to, that's something that Metro can do by its own ordinance that does not require going to the voters. They are also going to index the, the payroll tax to inflation. That's apparently something they can do without going to the voters. Still hearing, yeah, there was no formal announcement that they're not intending to go to the voters this fall, but that does seem to be, you know, what I'm hearing on the sides. But anyway, there will be some effort later this year to create this new governance structure. And there will be, you know, some opportunity for cities, as well as cities and counties both, to be at that table. And we'll see, we'll see that when it comes. They are moving forward on scoping a system evaluation. We, you know, we called it an audit before. Now we're calling it a system evaluation. They're working on scoping what that would be, but it's supposed to look across all three counties as well as metro, sort of a scoping of it the summer and then the actual work of it happening the fall and into, you know, January or February. There's a new data sharing agreement among the counties, which was, that is a big deal. That was kind of hard, I think, to get to that. And so it is a good, a big deal that they got that, got that hammered out. And I guess there's, you know, we can expect to see some big data dump one of these days. Yeah. So that's the SHS. Emma and Joseph and Jen and I had a talk with ODOT Rail, which we didn't talk about rail in today's TSP conversation. And, you know, we don't have much control over rail, but guess what? We're number one. We're number one because Harmony Road intersection is the number one. It's tied with some others. It's not the only number one, but in all their ranking of the worst intersections that need attention, Harmony Road intersection is one of the ones ranked number one.
Who did this ranking? The railroad?
ODOT Rail. ODOT Rail and their consultant, which is David, David Evans Associates. They are working on updating state rail plan. That's why they wanted to have a Zoom meeting with us. We talked to them about various concerns about the railroad and, you know, they reckon that their plans do call for grade separation both at Harrison Street and at Harmony Road. So those are huge, hugely expensive projects, but it's good that they're in their plan. So maybe someday, maybe someday. They are working on passenger rail expansion, going, trying to go from two to six round trips a day. They are eventually wanting to double track all the way through Milwaukee. Not at all clear how soon any of that's happening. It's not imminent for sure, but anyway, it was a good call. It was a good call, I thought, yeah. Okay. Anything else? I have been remiss in not giving updates from the environmental calls I do, the sort of building electrification and building emissions calls. There have been some interesting developments, and I do have some interesting links for people, so I will try to write that up in the next week and get it out there. Okay. Anyone else? Councilor Stavendor, anything for us?
Nope, not tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I've got one last thing before we go. I just, we missed it in your announcements today. I just want to note that city facilities will be closed on Thursday in observance of Juneteenth.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it looks like it'll be a lovely day, so I hope that everyone finds a way to mark the occasion. Okay, and we're going to get some rain this weekend. Yay, I'm tired of watering. Okay, if nothing else, Robert's ready to go.
I will gladly do that, but I do have an announcement. We are now in a minute forty six.
Past your record.
Regular session, so the thirty eight minute record still stands. I move to adjourn.
You were so close, Mayor. I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard? We are adjourned.